Good afternoon. Welcome to the, uh, this is Phil Best. I'm the mayor of the city of Dublin. I have all seven of our council members via, via, uh, go to meeting. So they will be here with us during this process. I ask that y'all be patient with us. We're gonna, this is totally different than us being in person and interacting like we usually do, but we want to give everyone a chance to interact and have any input on any subject that they want to, uh, as far as our council members go. If you put questions on Facebook Live, we will try to answer those in a timely manner after the meeting. And, uh, here we go. New, a different world, different time we're in right now. Uh, we're gonna start out with our invocation by Councilman Bill Brown, and then I'll stand up and say the pledge to the flag, and we'll get started with our agenda items. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, to everyone well bowed in advance. Uh, dear Lord, we gather today to handle the, the issues at hand with the city of Dublin. Uh, dear Lord, our, our world is, uh, is faced with a lot of issues surrounding the coronavirus. We ask you to, to protect us from, from this, uh, evil disease, dear Lord. We ask you to be with those first responders that are treating those that are ill. Uh, we ask you to be with our, our city staff as they continue the, the daily operations of the, of, uh, the city of Dublin business. And dear Lord, we ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thanks, Senator.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Okay. We'll start with our regular agenda items. Uh, number one on the agenda is the approval of the March 5th, 2020, and March 24th, 2020, special call city council meeting minutes. You should have a copy of those in your pack. And, uh, if, uh, you'll raise your hand, I'll, for the motion. Okay, I got a motion by Bill Brown. Do I hear a sec? Got a second by Jerry Davis. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. By raising your hand. Those opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is approval of bills over $3,000. You also have a copy of those. Got a motion by Mr. Edwards and a second by Mr. Jones that we approve the, uh, purchase of bills. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye by raising your hand. Those opposed? Motion carries. Item number three is approval of purchases over $3,000. Mr. Jones, would you like to go over that with us?
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Mayor, we have, uh, one purchase for your consideration. It's a SCADA system for our gas, uh, distribution system. What that, a SCADA system allows a person at a computer to control the whole system, see what's going on at every part of it at all times. We use it already in our water and sewer systems. So somebody stuck at the water plant can see all the water towers, all the pumps, everything going, and, and actually control them from one location, uh, with, with the proper access. Somebody could even do this from a cellphone. So, um, we budgeted $26,350 for this purchase. The lowest best vendor for this was Ideal Gas Measurements for a price of 23, uh, 24,308. Staff recommendation is to purchase from Ideal Gas Measurements.
Okay, first I'd like to ask, does any council member have any questions or discussion before we vote? Uh, Mr. Jones?
Is, Mr., uh, um, Lance, is that, um, secure? How secure is that? Where, how secure is, is that with the company?
Uh, it, it's very secure. We've never had a problem, uh, of, of being hacked into, uh, in our water and sewer systems. Um, and they have a lot of experience in doing this over the years, so the, the systems are very secure.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll ask if, if we can do this by hands again. I'll ask if there's a motion to approve. We have a motion by Mr. Jones. Mr. Brown, would you make that a second? I've got a second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item number four, discussion and/or action on giving local government approval to Wings to apply for a grant as an emergency shelter to the Department of Community Affairs. Mr. Jones?
Um, Wings, you know, is, is our local shelter for, uh, it's Women in Need of God Shelter, um, for battered women and children. Uh, they're applying for a grant, uh, as an emergency shelter through the Department of Public Affairs, and we just need to, uh, uh, say that's okay with us that they apply for that.
I think if I'm not mistaken, this is done every year. Uh, but I will now ask any council members. All right, Mr. Davis, you got a question or a comment?
No question. I was just getting ready for the motion.
Okay, gotcha. All right, let's get to the motion. I take it, Mr. Davis, you're making a motion that we approve this? Do I see a second? Got a second by Mr. Griggs. Any discussion? Hearing none, no, all those raise your hand agree. There you go. Thank you very much. Uh, item number five is discussion and/or action on a contract with Georgia Power for the Hillcrest relocation agreement. Uh, Mr. Uh, Jones, I guess, or is that, is that you, Mr. Powell?
I can talk about it if, if you'd like to. Um, that's part of the Hillcrest project. Um, Georgia Power is relocating their utilities in the appropriate locations, uh, to get it to, to the new right of way, uh, the new expanded right of way. And, um, in some locations, um, they, there's an issue of whether or not they have prior rights to the, to the right of way there. Um, if GDOT or the city of Dublin have prior rights, then Georgia Power will relocate those utilities at no cost to the city. Uh, of course, all this is being paid for with TIA funds. Um, we're trying to make sure we use those, um, responsibly, and so I would just ask that this agreement be approved, um, subject to myself and the city manager making, um, requesting changes to be made from Georgia Power, uh, to reduce the city's, um, liability on it.
Okay, uh, council, does anyone have any questions or comments on that particular issue? If not, I'll ask that, uh, is there a motion to approve staff's recommendation? We got a motion-
Well, a motion made, uh, Mr. Mayor, a motion made, uh, subject to review by the city manager and city attorney, uh, minimizing the expense to the city.
Okay. Got a motion, is there a second? Gerald, is yours a second? All right, we got a motion by Mr. Davis and a second by Mr. Smith, Gerald Smith, that we approve the staff recommendation with the conditions included. Any discussion? Okay, by show of hands, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Hi, I'm Jeff Cannon, President, Citizens Bank of Lawrence County. When we began looking for a location for our second Dublin banking office, the historic Henry Building looked like the perfect spot because Dublin and Lawrence County is our focus, and making banking easier and more convenient for our customers is our goal. Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
A local full-service community bank, offering quality banking services. Citizens Bank of Lawrence County, now open in downtown Dublin.
There are many ways to rejuvenate at Tofara's in Dublin. In addition to our boutique and eyelash and eyebrow services, we offer nourishing and exfoliating facial cleanses for clear, hydrated, younger-looking skin. Colon hydrotherapy, this is a large form of an enema method of removing waste and toxins from the body to boost energy, and has been known to enhance your immune system while shedding pounds. Red light therapy, Tofara offers this simple, safe alternative to liposuction. The LipoMelt treatment is 100% non-invasive and doesn't cause side effects or bruising. Clients have been known to see inches melt away often in just one session. Also, ladies, be sure to come in and ask about our Yani treatments. Tofara has many options available to help you look and feel amazing. Tofara is located in the Dublin Mall.
The city of Dublin's natural gas department is offering a $1,000 rebate on the purchase of a natural gas stove, furnace, and tank, or tankless water heater for new construction homes, or if you're remodeling your home. Individual rebates include: natural gas tankless, up to $400 rebate and free gas service installation; natural gas tank, free 40-gallon or $200 rebate on other sizes; free gas service installation; natural gas furnace, $200 rebate; natural gas stove, $100 rebate; natural gas dryer, $100 rebate; natural gas grill, $100 rebate; natural gas logs, $100 rebate. Maximum yearly rebate? No maximum. Save now. Save later. Call the City of Dublin Natural Gas at 277-5048.
Okay, item number, do y'all feel like you, do you remember the show The Brady Bunch? That's what this looks like. Uh, item number six, a discussion interaction on a contract with 13 Sequel LLC. Mr. Jones?
Right, Mr. Mayor, um, this is a contract, uh, with a different company that we had originally intended, uh, to run our municipal court docket system. Um, what we were using, uh, we were switching over, and it, it just was not working very well, so we found this product that it works extremely well. Um, and Attorney Powell might have some comments on it, but, um, the cost of this is no upfront cost. It is paid through an add-on in the citations, uh, and so this, this doesn't really cost the city anything. Um, the cost is $5 per citation written. Um, so if we write a bunch of citations, we pay a big bill. Write very few citations, we pay a very small bill. But staff recommendation is to approve this contract with I3 Sequel LLC.
Okay, council, is there any discussion or questions? If not, do I hear a motion to accept staff's recommendation? Got a motion by Mr. Griggs and a second by Mr. Brown to accept staff's recommendation? Any discussion? Okay, by show of hands, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, the seventh item is discussion and/or action on a contract with Tyler Technology on executive time. Uh, is this, uh, Mr. Jones, are you gonna handle this one?
Uh, yes, sir, I can. Um, this, uh, this is not a new expense. This has already been paid for by council. Um, it's, the expense for this is already included in our contract with Tyler, um, so that's been approved. Um, this is just the, the go-ahead on the contract, actually implement the system. And what this is, is our timekeeping system. So our employees now will come in, and they have various ways. Some places have a time clock. Some people can even do it on their phone. So a policeman coming into the, uh, city limits may need to clock in on a phone. Um, it all depends on where they're gonna be and what access they have. Some, some will be doing it on a computer. Um, but it's just our, basically, time clock system that will work with our payroll system now, and staff recommendation is to approve.
Okay, y'all. Any questions from council? Comments? If not, uh, do I see a motion to approve staff recommendation? Got a motion by Mr. Edwards and a second by Mr. Smith that we approve the, uh, Mr. Chris Smith, that we approve the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, by show of hands, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item number eight is citizens' comments, which are certainly, we, we will be reviewing the comments made on our Facebook Live, and there will be a response to you in a very short, timely manner. Uh, we, again, want to tell our citizens how much we appreciate this and how much we look forward to y'all coming back to, uh, to, to our council meetings and us all being able to be in the same room. And I mean that sincerely.
It's Chevy Truck Month. That Dublin Chevrolet.
Drop by Dublin Chevrolet for our tremendous Chevy Truck Month savings.
Drive this traverse for only $29, 995.
At Dublin Chevrolet, you get more truck for your money.
And more money for your truck.
Drive the new Blazer for only $31, 900.
A great deal doesn't take luck just to visit the Dublin Chevrolet. Call, click, or come see us.
Dublin Chevrolet, the only dealer you will ever need.
Where's my green jacket?
You're not gonna do it? Come on, just one time. He loves music and books. Don't you? So I remember right before I was, uh, like, went to sleep, I, I was just praying, you know, and I was like, "God, please don't let me wake up to bad news about my baby." It was just a huge blessing because, you know, I mean, I've never met these people before. This is my first child, um, and, I mean, they were like family.
What would you say to one of the nurses if they were here now?
Um, I would-
That's a bold, Dan. Cause there is one up here.
Oh. Hi, baby. Hey. How are you? Good? Hi, Rex.
So what was I saying? What would you say to one of the nurses if they were up here?
I would just say, "Thank you." I wasn't gonna do this. You know, I know that you were just doing your job, so to speak, but you gave me everything.
We'll go to council comments, and I'm gonna go down the line. Uh, Mr. Griggs, you got any council comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to, um, say that this situation we're in is very serious, and that I pray that everybody will practice the social distancing and, and, and try to abide by everything that's been put in place. We continue to grow with our cases, and, um, we just need to get a control on it and, and try to make some sacrifices not to live like we do every day up until such time. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Is that me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, once again, I'd like to reiterate, we'd like to thank everyone for watching, and, um, sorry that we have to do it this way, but due to the, what's going on with, we'd like to, um, like you said, Mr. Mayor, I'd be glad when we get back, we can all join together and meet, but, hey, but, I'd like to give a shout-out to all our city workers, the city police, the city firemen, the sanitation workers, the, um, water department, gas department, those that are in critical condition, public works, that are out there working every day on the front lines, the health care workers, and, and doctors, and what happens out there helping, trying to control this. But thank y'all for all that you do and, and your service, and believe in it. We, we look forward to, and, and, and I wish that there was a way we could really show our appreciation, but I hope that when this is over, that we think about showing our appreciation to these people in some kind of way. And, uh, also like to, um, say everyone, stay home, be safe, do not, you know, go by the guideline, keep a distance, stay home, the mandated order, so we can get this over and go about living our lives the way we normally do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, as, as already been mentioned, these are unprecedented times and do take unprecedented measures. Um, you know, we all, uh, certainly look forward to the, to the time when we can get back to a sense of normalcy, uh, what that new normal will be, and what will, will, is yet to be determined, but just want everybody to take heed to control what you can control, uh, stay out of harm's way, stay home, and take heed to, to the regulations that have been put in place. Uh, as mentioned by Mr. Jones, uh, we have a lot to be indebted for with all the frontline service folks, whether it's through the city of Dublin, the healthcare officials, et cetera, and, uh, those don't, do not go underappreciated. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to thank, um, our, uh, council. The, we gave an update, uh, a couple of days ago, uh, to our citizens, uh, where we were appreciating all of the first responders, and that was, uh, you, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, our city manager, Lance Jones, Councilman Bennett Jones, and Reverend Jones. Uh, uh, I think we did a wonderful job. I commend you all in informing the citizens of our conditions, these unprecedented conditions, and emphasizing to our citizens how very, how much importance it is to abide by the rules and regulations that we put forth from the city, uh, level as well as the state and the nation. I do want to urge the citizens that please abide by these rules so we can protect ourselves from hurt, harm, and danger. And I want all of us to know that we really, all of them to know, the citizens to know that we really love and appreciate you and all that you would do to abide and to keep everyone safe, and remember that God is still in control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh, Mr. Edwards?
Counselors, I know a lot's been said already, and, uh, but I can't really emphasize enough how proud I am of all the city employees, uh, police, fire, utilities, sanitation, uh, the city employees have given 110% this whole time, uh, working their head held high, and I'm proud that they know how this is a serious situation, and the citizens really rely on their help, and they have, uh, been at it 100%. Uh, and I really, really appreciate everything that every city employee's done. We appreciate the EMTs, the medical workers, uh, everything everyone is doing. Uh, we just ask everyone, be safe. I know it's challenging at times to, uh, stay at home, not be able to go, and some folks really don't understand what's going on, but I tell you, if you could just hit the pause button for a couple of weeks and stay put, we can try to get past this thing and, and move on. And I do look forward to the day that we can have people come to council chambers and, uh, and, uh, talk to us and, and, uh, get back to some form of normalcy. And, uh, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chris Smith?
Uh, I just want to thank everybody for joining us, uh, today. I want to thank Mr. Robert, uh, for setting up his technology for social media so everyone can watch. Uh, and just to piggyback off everybody, I just want to thank our first responders, uh, they're doing a great job, and I think the city is starting to see how important this, uh, our ordinances are to keep everyone safe. So with that being said, I just want to thank everybody for joining in.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Gerald Smith?
Well, I too would like to thank everybody for, uh, the patience and, for the most part, adherence to the requests that we've made for people to use caution and to, uh, obey the curfews. Can't emphasize enough how important that is for people not to congregate. Uh, the mayor and I were having a conversation with one of our local doctors, and he was emphasizing, and stressing just how critical it is for us to not interact and to keep our distance and to cover your mouth when coughing, and all these things that we, we've all heard about. This is still a very volatile, uh, situation that we're in. It's dangerous. Uh, it is not to be taken lightly, so I hope that everyone will obey the ordinances that the governor actually has put forth, and we've kind of followed those. Um, and I just ask everybody to pray. Um, we need some help in this country, and, uh, there's, there's a master up there that can help us through it. And I hope we're gonna put faith in that, and we'll, we'll use good judgment, and, uh, all of us will be back safe, we'll get through this, and we, everything's gonna be fine, but we just got, gotta do our part. To thank all of these citizens for being patient, I thank the city employees that are working through this. Some of them are having to work. We've got some, some, uh, responsibilities that the city's expected to carry out, and we're gonna do the best we can with that, and some people are gonna be working and just be grateful that, that there are those who are willing to do that. So God bless all of us and all of y'all, and, uh, hopefully we'll get through this thing quickly. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, Mr. Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that, um, if you, uh, if a citizen out there has a municipal court case that was scheduled for, um, April the 15th, uh, the municipal court has rescheduled those, or will be rescheduling those, um, you should receive a letter in the mail indicating your new court date, which will be sometime later in the summer. Um, and that, that letter will be mailed to whatever address was on your citation. Um, if you have questions about that, you can call, uh, the radio room. There, there are people in the radio room in the police department from 10 to 6 every day, and that number is 277-5023. Um, you can call and, um, get, if you're able to pay your fine in advance, you can do that, but we're only accepting payments through the mail, um, and you can call them and get that information. Um, and, uh, are you gonna address the, um, the governor's issue, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, you, you, I am, but if you want to, you go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, he, I've been checking his website, um, and if you Google, you know, State of Georgia Governor, Governor's Office, he's got a, a page on his website that, um, shows all of his executive orders, and I've just checked and refreshed the page, and the, the executive order for the shelter in place that he announced yesterday has not been, um, uploaded yet, uh, so we're waiting to see that. I've been getting some phone calls about what, you know, what does that mean? Um, and until he, he publishes it and we're able to read it, uh, I really can't answer those questions, um, but once we have that, we're glad to answer any questions we can.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, uh, echoing everybody's comments, thanking all our citizens for complying with the order. We, we wrote a lot of tickets at first, but I think everybody's kind of getting to understanding now we're serious about this. Um, had to write very few last night for violating the curfew, so just thank everybody, and, and please, uh, check on your neighbors, especially elderly neighbors. Let us know, anybody that you know that needs some help, maybe needs some food, uh, can't get out and about. Our police force is, uh, working hard to make sure folks get their groceries, get their medicine. Um, just let us know, and we'll, we'll try to help any way we can. We're doing a lot of things we don't normally do, but, um, that's what we're here for. Um, and I, I can't say enough about my folks that are, are, are out there working every day, making sure you've got water or sewer, that your garbage is being taken off. They are really putting themselves out there. Police force is, is stretched to the limit. We're having to do things we've never even thought about doing, so, um, just, uh, when you, when you're, when you're out and about doing the things you have to do, um, just really cooperate with the city workers as, as much as humanly possible, cause we need your help, um, just like you need ours. And, uh, I think you're gonna address the governor's thing, so I'll limit my comments to that.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll wrap us up. I do have a, a few thank yous I want to do. Number one, I want to thank the city council. This is very different of how we've been meeting. Y'all have all been very cooperative, and it's, it's, it's good that we can come together and still take care of the business of the city and have ways to do that. And thank y'all for spending the extra time that you're having to spend to prepare for this. And I want to thank Robert for putting it together. He, he and, he and Blake, uh, I mean, Brooke have done a tremendous job of, of improving already from last time we met till now, and that's taken a lot of time. Of course, I want to thank all of our guys out there on the front line, and I want to thank, uh, I want to thank the, the, the senior staff, too. They've done a great job. There's been a lot of hours put into this. Uh, there's a lot of communication with the senior staff at night, Lance, Josh, Blake, uh, so they're working. They're working hard. Uh, as far as the governor goes, we're expecting, as Josh said, we're expecting at any time to get the, his order, uh, and when we do, the steps we're going to take, and Josh and Lance and I will look at it and see, uh, kind of what, what, what it's about, what we need to do, how it compares to ours. And then we, we will announce ahead of time, but we will have a, a Facebook Live session this afternoon, if, even if it's late this afternoon, and we will try to bring you all up to date on what's going on with the, uh- And we will try to bring you all up to date on what's going on with the, with the new order and how we need to comply with it. Last thing I want to say is I lost, we lost a very good friend yesterday to the virus, and that is Mayor Ronnie Dixon of Vidalia. He has been in city government for 40-plus years. He's been a state leader. He's been, he's been a great, great friend to the city of Dublin and us to him, and I just want us to please think about, think about his wife, Sandy, his brother Wendell, and let's keep them in our prayers because he had a rough time and he passed away yesterday about 8 o'clock in the morning. So it can happen. It can happen to any of us. So be careful. Please be careful and try to stay as, have as least amount of contacts you can with people. And thank God for looking after our community. And if there's no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.